This conference will now be recorded.
At 5:03. We'll begin with our call to order. Commissioner Lovendall.
President.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Commissioner Burns.
Present.
Commissioner Pogwizd.
Pogwizd's here.
Commissioner Rask. Commissioner Rask is not here, and Commissioner Webb is not here. We have with us Administrator Radcliffe, Recorder Harrison, and do we have with us Diana Moffett yet, or are we going to call her?
No, we're going to call her from the other room.
Okay. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So I think it's easiest to enter into this executive session by entertaining a motion, and I'm going to read the numbers. So I entertain a motion that we enter into an executive session under ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations, and also ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Can I entertain a motion for that? So moved, okay. We have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. Counselor Lovendall.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Tim here.
Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Okay, I take it that you meant yes, right, Tim?
Tim, yes.
Yeah, okay. And so I am now opening an executive session, and so we're going to...Dave, we're going to have to...
No, no, you can stay.
Okay.
You can stay.
We're going to stay, we're going to move.
We're going to move, yeah.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'll turn on the microphones and everything. There we are. Okay, well, we are now going to come out of executive session under ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations, and ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, from public inspection. And we have some business to conduct actions from those. So I'd like to entertain a motion under, for executive session, ORS 192.662D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations to direct our staff to move forward as discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Call for the vote. Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Lovendall.
Yes.
Okay, and I'd also like to entertain a motion under ORS 192.662O2F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection to direct our staff to move forward as discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I will call for the vote. Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Lovendall.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No, not yet, okay. So I will, thank you, Melissa, I will add that we did do our roll call and Pledge of Allegiance earlier, and we are going to add Counselor Webb is now present with us as well, and he was present with us during the executive session. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our session, and I'm just going to say welcome everybody, and thank you so much for your patience in us having to be doing some other city business. We had wanted to possibly move up the public hearing on the agenda ahead of all of these citizen items, because, in part because our Planning Commission Chair, who's been giving us so much time, needs to go do something else, unfortunately. So I would propose that we maybe actually, could we do the brief presentation and then do the public hearing? Would that be okay? Do you have enough time?
You are in charge of the agenda, Your Honor.
Is that okay with you, Greg? Okay. So we're going to move this, we're going to keep the citizen concerns, are going to come a little bit late, I'm sorry for the public, but we're just going to have to do this. Okay, we're going to welcome, we have a presentation to council that's going to be, that we will welcome you to make at this time, and we have, we're just going to be limiting this presentation to 10 minutes, just because we've got these things to go. Are you telling me? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those of you that didn't know me, and I live at 42610, so I live inside the city, but I am the Community Service Chair.
Can you speak into the microphone, just so that we can...
I'm the Community Service Chair for the Port Orford Rotary Club, and so I'm here to represent the Rotary Club. And a couple of things that I want to preface before we get started is that Rotary is an organization that is built to serve their communities, and Rotary here has been serving this community since 1954, 70 years of doing that. And we're sitting in a beautiful Rotary project. This council chambers was remodeled by the Rotary Club, put the carpet in, redid the ceiling, painted the walls, put this here. So we're your friend, okay, and we want to continue to be your friend, and we want to continue to do things for the city and the citizens of this, of this burg that we live in. And I've spent a lot of time, because I started 38 years ago, and the project I started on was the Visitor Center that we built at Buffington Park. Been mentored a lot of times. So today's concern, what we were trying to do is, I had people from the club and from the community come to me and say, our horse arena's in terrible shape, it's not appropriate for being used for horses or anybody, it's not safe. And so they came to me and says, Mike, what can we do? And members of the club came back, and we went to the board, and we said, well, you know, we've been raising some money to do some community service for quite some time, and we have the money to do it. And so I said, okay, I'll sit down and design the project, and I'll look into what it will cost us to do that project. And so what I designed was exactly what's there, nothing more, nothing different, just we replaced the existing posts on a better setting, in other words, there are different adjustment between them to maintain the newer kind of fencing that goes in.
Are you going to get us an elephant to come?
I couldn't resist, I couldn't resist, okay? If it's strong enough to hold an elephant, we ought to be able to hold some horses. So Hummer's available today, okay? So as I put this together, we looked at it, and we said, okay, yes, we could put together. But let's back up and let's look at history, because from the day Buffington Park was started, Rotary's been involved. The ball field is named after Red, a charter member of Port Orford Rotary. The Rotary helped with the community gardens in that you help us support, and we do a great job of helping feed our community from that garden. We've helped from everything, from the restroom, when the contractor that originally put that together failed at doing it, Rotary stepped in and put that restroom back together and made it what it is today. We helped rebuild the putt-putt golf course over time, and built the storage for the clubs, and furnished that storage with the stuff that's in it, so that kids can go play anytime they want to, or adults. I personally have been involved, as even a contractor for the city, to help you take down things like the handball court when it became dangerous to be around, and so I know what those items are during my time. So Rotary's here today to offer to the city up to $15,000 or more to replace the horse arena with a permanent arena of the same kind, but the post will be well-drilling rod, Schedule 40 pipe, embedded in concrete, won't go anywhere for our lifetimes, and the new vinyl fencing that people are finding safer and more longevity and more time, and this is in use in our community by Wendy Poole, who showed me this fencing system, and it's exceptional. First off, kids and animals can't sit on it, so you can't break the rails. It has a 15,000-pound breaking strength, hence the elephant, okay? It's made out of PVC and stainless steel wire. It won't rust, it won't rot.
Yes.
So it won't go away. And so with doing that, I have some concerns in that I'm hearing we need a contractor, and I'm asking, why do we need a contractor for labor? Rotary can't afford a contractor. I mean, we can't afford that kind of money. We've put our hands together in this community, and we've helped build this community. So I'm asking that Rotary be able to provide the labor. If you need insurance, Rotary provides insurance certificates to the city all of the time for third-party liability if somebody goes in there and gets hurt while we're working on it, and Rotarians always cover their own self with their own personal liability insurance for injury. But there also is another way. I was a state park manager. I have built and developed volunteer programs for the state of Oregon, including the park host system that's currently in use throughout the state, and you use one. I started that, and therefore, if you need to do that, you have the ability, and I have signed up for this city many times over the years, to be a volunteer for you, and the city then can cover their volunteers under a very inexpensive workers' comp policy, so that you're covered under insurance. And, you know, we're willing to step up and do that. All of our people who worked here on the building did that. None of them required a licensed contractor to be here to do that. And the other thing is, is while I was an Oregon State Park Manager, I was also responsible for the Native American sites that are lithic sites up and down the coast. And I know archaeology, and I know that it doesn't require, when you take a site like this one, which has been turned up by the sawmill that was there before it, turned up by me three times, no less, in my career here, because I rebuilt those corrals twice and have put stuff in that, that Native American sites that are here, if we want to go work at Buffington, or at Battle Rock Park, I will tell you right now, it's a known lithic site, and we need permission, and we need somebody to come look in at. But the park is no different than your street. If you break a water line, you don't have to have a Native American archaeology site unless you find something. If you find something, absolutely, you stop, you take care of it, and I've been doing this for a career, okay? So I'm concerned with those kinds of things being a requirement, when I don't see them being a requirement for what we're doing. There are other ways to do business. So my ask for you today is that Rotary be able to provide you with the labor and the materials to rebuild the horse arena at Buffington Park, and that we work as a team to get that done.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Okay, so would we, well, so what I... Presentation for this, so I don't know, do you want to discuss this now?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know, we can definitely talk about those things. I will speak to the Native American component first, because what we have heard from Sarah Palmer, who is the woman who we worked with, with the community building and the American Legion Hall, is they are...
She's a tribal preservation historic officer for the Coquell tribe.
Thank you. Was, they are really focusing on public lands in what they're doing, and so we do need to ask her as we do those things, because I, and I understand that those sites...
I work as a state archaeologist, so I understand where you're coming from, but I also work with the person who is in charge of all of that for the entire state, okay? And so I'm just saying, we need to look at it differently, because it's no different than you digging in the street. It's a park, it's a piece of property. If you've got to replace a sign, you shouldn't have to have an archaeologist come down and do that, or if you need to plant a tree or replace a tree, you don't, you're doing the same thing. And so alls I'm saying is, let's relook at the issue and figure out what's going on.
I think what we need to do is ask her, because she specifically articulated to us that they're doing things differently now. So we need to have a conversation and get clear with her on what's...
The laws haven't changed, okay? The state laws haven't changed.
Yeah, it's Goal Five, it's how they're interpreting it, so we'll have to, I think, get clarity on that. And the same thing on the, on the, asking about the contractor and the things like that, again, the level of scrutiny and the level of things that we are being asked to do is different than has been in the past, but I will continue to look into that, and so if you want to come meet with me, we will do that.
Absolutely, anytime, you know that, Melissa. I'm here to help, and I want you to understand that Rotary's here to help. We're part of your team. Ask us to be part of your team and include us in it, so that we're included in your community. I mean, it'd be a travesty not to have Rotary involved.
Well, of course, Mike, I just want to say, I want to thank you so much, because I know you're doing a huge amount of work over there, helping us right now, cleaning out that community building, getting it ready for construction, and I know that's been a tremendous amount of work you've done, so really appreciate that.
There's another work party this weekend, and then we will have the sale on the following Saturday, and we should be able, right after that, to clean it up and be ready for your construction.
Excellent. Thank you so, so much, really appreciate that, and thank you for all of your years of service.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
So on the volunteer insurance, alls we do is we ask our insurance company, and they, we pass a resolution, which we used to typically do every single year, to cover our volunteers if there was an injury, and there's, typically, it's no cost to the city. The insurance company just adds that with a resolution.
With a resolution.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, so now we're going to move up, we're going to move up to item eight up further, which is the public hearing, which is about the updates to the Port Orford Municipal Code, Title 17. And as we discussed in our work session, what we wanted to do was go through this section by section, the first half of it, and what we discussed for people who weren't here is, we don't necessarily want to go through this line by line, but we'll go through section by section, and if people have things they want to bring up and discuss, or get questions or proposed changes, we will do that at this time. And Commissioner Thielen, if you'd like to come up to the front, so you can be available to ask questions, I would welcome that. And so, anyway, we're going to begin then with, on page 10, does everybody have their things out?
So are we going through the red line version?
We are going through ES, Proposed Amendment, first, and that's what I was...
Clean copy? We're going through the clean copy?
Yeah.
One without...
That was the week.
That's proposed.
I was going through the proposed one, is what I was referring to.
So we're going through the proposed one? It's not red line.
The one that starts with page two?
Yes.
What page do you want to start on?
Oh, the Proposed Amendment is, it's the grade, it's the grade one, so it's the one bold. We're going to share until, and the red line.
Okay, so the first part that we're going to go through is definitions. So the question is, does anybody have anything they would like to bring up about definitions?
Are we on page 10?
On page, we'll start, definitions is page 10 through 15, so...
Very good.
I had the one, the question about lot, that was the one term that I...
Yes, and we...
Hoping that we could define.
Greg, would you like, do you have the answer for, oh, Crystal's here, hey, Crystal. So Crystal has an answer about lot, I don't know, Joseph, did you send out that email?
I passed out a paper, I think Joseph passed out a paper that I sent yesterday, where, it's an email.
Yeah, I don't think we got that, I don't think that came out, but Crystal...
Well, I can explain it, it's not that long. So first, I just said that a councilman had asked about the definition of lot, and he was wanting a definition, and I did find, because we didn't have the whole code in front of us last time, I did find the definition of lot in our zoning code and also in our subdivision code, and here's the definition out of the zoning, which would be the one that's the most important, because the subdivision one applies only to doing subdivision. So I'm going to read it as it is stated in the code. Lot means a unit of land that is created by a subdivision of land, ORS 92010, in compliance with applicable zoning and the City of Port Orford subdivision ordinance, or a lot of record created by deed or land sales contract and duly recorded in Curry County Property Records prior to applicable zoning, subdivision, and partitioning ordinances, exclusive of units of land created solely to establish a separate tax account.
So that seemed to cover it when I read it, I'm sorry you don't have a, I'm sorry you don't have it in front of you, Joseph will bring that, but it seemed like that covered it.
Yeah, that was my question, I think that covered it.
Thank you for bringing that up, and I'm sorry I didn't have it with me last week.
That's good enough for me, thank you.
I had it with me, but I didn't have it open.
Okay, on the top of page 11, I was wondering, this is just a minor thing, C, it says interior located within the building, it seems like we should add space, like interior space located within a building, does that make sense? Or am I not reading it? Space located within a building.
This is how you can have accessory structures, so either way is fine, I guess, we could put space in there, but it just, they can be interior or exterior, and they could be attached or detached.
Would that include a shed?
Well, that, if it was made into, if it had a kitchen and was, fit the building code, it would, it would have to be able to be livable.
Okay.
That is just something I would propose to make it readable, I guess it's not hugely, you know, it just...
Okay, you would like in, located?
Yeah, interior located, make that into, an interior space into an ADU, because otherwise it just says interior, I guess you'd be using it as an interior located within a building.
Yep.
Where, the reason I ask about the shed is, this has happened in California with ADUs, they're converting tough sheds.
Uh huh.
So, anyway.
Well, so that's an important question, did you hear that, Crystal and Greg?
Well, they, before they could have an ADU, they would have to meet the building codes.
Okay, so it's covered there.
They can't just, they can't just take a shed and call it an ADU, they would have to see what's required in the building codes.
Okay.
It's a little bit tricky, because the actual section about ADUs is at the very end, but this is just the definition part.
Perfect.
We talked last time about, I had brought up the thing about the unit, the dwelling unit, and Greg, you had a, we discussed that, so hopefully that adjustment can be made, and that would be on page 12, that one, oh, I had a question on that, the dwelling unit, it says portion thereof constructed on or off-site, I didn't really understand that, onsite or off-site, because isn't it all going to be onsite?
It could be constructed off-site.
Oh, okay, got it. So that would be like the manufactured home put-in, I was sort of thinking, what do they, so, okay, got it, thank you. Okay.
I was wondering about the expedited land use decisions.
Are we still in, oh, in that, what page is that on?
Okay, I'll comment on that. We haven't used that, but it's in the state law, and if we had somebody who wanted to use it because they had done it somewhere else, they could ask, and we could follow the state law, so I just put it in there, so that if people want to look at it, they can.
I didn't quite understand, includes only land that is zoned for residential uses and is within the urban growth boundary.
Well, it has to have those conditions.
So it wouldn't be within the city limits.
No, it would be, because when they say within the urban growth boundary, it means within the city limits, because the city limits is in the urban growth boundary.
It's like the Donut concept, the urban growth boundary in the city.
Yeah, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but...
Well, they can't, they can't go out into the county and do it.
This is only our...
But the urban growth boundary is county, not the city.
Well, yeah, but in the, in most of the major cities in Oregon now, they, the cities themselves are running their urban growth boundaries. The smaller cities like Port Orford, and even smaller and a few bigger, don't always do it, because they don't have the capacity, but...
So should we just remove that?
We have an urban growth management agreement that we should update sometime that should get us in a better position with that.
So maybe I was misunderstanding it, I thought you were saying the city is within the urban growth boundary.
It is.
It makes sense, okay.
It's like a Venn diagram.
Yeah, okay, okay, so it doesn't really make sense to change it.
This is right out of the state law.
Yeah, okay, any other questions or recommended changes in the definitions? Because we're just going to do one, we're going to do each part one by one.
Did you get what you needed out of that, Gary? Because I, your question was...
It just doesn't make sense to me, but I'm fine with going...
I didn't see the satisfied look on your face, and I was...
Which one is it that doesn't make sense?
Well, I would just think it's within the city limits, but I'm fine with going with whatever.
So what you're saying, you would like to see it to say, includes only land that is zoned for residential uses within city limits, instead of...
I'm sure we could change it to that for ourselves, because of the way our situation is set up.
We can just get rid of, and is within the urban growth boundary, because then it's implied, it is, it is within, our whole code is for...
Yeah, we'll just say within, for residential.
Yeah.
Period.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a good change. So Greg, are you going to make, who's going to be, are you the one that's going to make these?
I'm making notes.
Okay.
Sure, Crystal is.
And I make notes every time.
Joseph is also.
Okay, excellent, I just want to make sure...
And then Joseph has the tape and stuff like that.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions? Oh, no, I didn't. Okay, so, I'm so sorry, you guys, I was reminded that this has to be a hearing, and so I did not open it up as a public hearing, so that's an error on my part. So I'm going to stop what we're doing right now, and I'm going to open this up as a public hearing, do I have to make a motion to open it up? What? I don't have it.
Oh. Does she need one? Right? Does no? Or did we not close it?
Okay, got it, okay. Okay, so this is the problem that I did, so I'm really sorry, you guys, I didn't, I didn't quite get this because of the other meeting, so...
And did you close the hearing last time?
I did not close it last time, but I'm opening, I'm going to open it up, so we, it's, you're right, it's open, so it's okay, so it's open, but I do...
It's continued, all right.
That's the part, so thank you for, thank you for your patience, everyone. So what we need to do is, why don't we finish this section, and then we'll open it up for testimony? So does anybody have any other... So does anybody have any other sections that they want to discuss for the definitions part? No, okay. So I'm going to put a pause on and let us then, we are going to open this. We're in a public hearing that was continued from the last meeting. We are now going to open this testimony for this hearing and we welcome anybody to testify for this hearing. Troy, are you testifying for this hearing or separately? Okay. Does anybody else wish to testify for this hearing? Anybody online wish to testify as part of this hearing? Can you tell Joseph?
It does not look like anyone, no one's messaging and no one has raised their hand.
Okay. Hearing, no interest in providing testimony to counsel. I will close the testimony part of, of this hearing and we will continue on with our deliberation. And again, I'm sorry about that, that little process, Matthew. Okay, so now we are going to go on to our deliberation. We're going to look at the limited land use decision type two procedure. So that's page 15. 18. Does anybody have any questions or suggestions for this?
So we passed over the whole manufactured mobile.
Well, that was in the definitions part. Did you want to have, go back to that?
Uh, we don't, we don't have to, but those words are so interchanged. I was wondering if Greg could answer a question.
Okay, well, and so let's go back. That's in that, we're going to go back to that definitions part. So please ask your question, Tim.
So my question is, it's so confusing how manufactured dwelling, manufactured home, mobile home park are all mangled together and there's different years of the units and then recreational vehicles are thrown in. Can you help explain that?
Yeah, I can. And that's, it took me a long time to figure that all out.
Thank you.
There's a lot going on there. Basically, we had, we used to have mobile homes and we had RVs back in the day. Then we had manufactured dwelling. We had travel trailers. We had, so travel trailers, mobile homes. The new, the new name for that is manufactured dwelling.
So all of those are encompassed in that one term?
Correct. They all, they all drive on the highway to a place and get sat down somewhere.
Okay.
On the other hand, we have RVs.
Correct.
Which drive around, but then they get up and they go somewhere else.
Okay.
Those are the, so there are just two categories. One has everything in it was ever built that was approved by the state to be set on a property and you could live in it. Everything else is a, is an RV. Whether it has a motor or whether it's pulled as a trailer.
Okay.
And then those dates, they were just called, it was the same thing, but they were called something different.
Because HUD still recognizes mobile homes, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm sorry?
HUD still recognizes mobile homes and manufactured homes as being the same. They have wheels, but they get set on foundations.
Yes. The, the traveling on the highway piece is, is the, is the thing that makes them.
Okay.
That category.
Okay.
Traveling on the highway there.
Living in one, you're homeless and living in the other, you're not homeless also, which is a pretty important distinction, I think, in a community like ours. You're counted as a homeless, you're counted as homeless, homeless if you live in an RV.
Well, actually, new state law to, to put a little bit spin on it.
Correct.
It is now legal to live in a, an RV on a permanent basis in an RV park.
Correct. And those aren't homeless then.
They're not homeless.
Crystal, please go, Crystal.
They're not counted as housing by the state, even though they can be used as homes. So it's, there's a whole bunch of confusing stuff in this, but.
I was just wondering if ours.
That was confusing too.
Oh, we're right on down the line with, anything with housing, we're, that we're triple checked.
Okay, very good.
So, okay, are you done, Brad?
My concern was, is that some of our lower income families depend on that designation for school lunches, you know, and it wouldn't, I was hoping that it wouldn't interfere with any of our services that are provided to lower income persons. So it sounds like you've got that covered. Thank you.
And again, this is code moving forward if we adopt it.
Even correct.
Because the reason I ask is a recreational vehicle park means a place where two or more recreational vehicles are located within 500 feet of one another on a lot, tract land. But there are RV parks that have mobile homes and manufactured homes in them.
You can still have those both in there.
Okay, that's.
In an RV park, you can merge the two.
Correct, okay. That's what I thought I had read, but then when I read the description of the recreational vehicle park, which is the last paragraph on page 14, it makes it sound like you can't, but because it says it goes further. If you go to the top of page 15, it says recreational vehicle park does not mean an area designated only for picnic or overnight camping or a manufactured dwelling park or a mobile home park.
Yeah, and see, that's, that's straight out of the law.
And, and it wouldn't be a manufactured dwelling park or a mobile home park. It could still be an RV park.
Okay.
But you could have a.
Okay, okay. Very good.
Wouldn't be called a manufactured dwelling. That's, that's, and that's the distinction. One is called RV park, the other is manufactured dwelling park. And where they go in the zones is, are distinct.
Yeah, okay. And that makes sense to me. And then it gets even a little more confusing because now on top of all those terms we just discussed, they throw in the term residential trailer. It was only built before 1962, so that even makes it more confusing. So anyway, thank you, Greg, for your patience.
Like the classic old, like those Airstreams, yeah.
Sweet, Ricky.
Yeah, okay. I totally, boy, this, that is very confusing.
Super confusing.
It seems like part of it is that those changing definitions over time that they're trying to deal with.
Sorry, Ann, for bringing that up. It's just, I really was wrestling with that and I hadn't got a chance to talk to Greg yet.
So it's basically just state law that it's un, unless or unchanged.
Yeah. Okay, any other things about the definitions, which is through page 15, basically? And our goal is to get through these sections with the idea that, I should have said this at the beginning. I'm sorry it was a little bit scattered coming out of the executive sessions. That, you know, at the last meeting, we decided, why don't we break this up? We'll go through it by section by section. We'll discuss it by consensus. And if everybody is good with the changes that we suggested in this section, we'll agree to them and we'll move on. And then in that way, we'll get through the whole thing. So when it's time to adopt it, we're kind of ready to adopt it, but we've done through it. Okay? That makes sense? And I mean, if somebody comes back next week and said, oh, my gosh, there's something earlier. I got to bring it back up. We can do it. But generally for process, we're trying to move through it, working towards completion.
And I'll agree up to page 26.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Get, get through that. So is everybody okay now through page 15, through the definitions?
I'm sorry, Ann.
So we were almost, we were ready to kind of agree to it, Tim, but.
I know.
Your, 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 your comment quite, quite seriously and we all respect your opinion. I think that we want to hear it. So.
Absolutely.
Don't be shy about any of your questions.
Okay, so then, hearing no other matters about the definitions, let's move forward with any questions or comments on the limited land use decision. Joseph, I just had a question for you about generating that list of, that where people get within 200 feet, get a list. Is that an easy thing for you to generate? Or like when you have to generate a list for notices to give, give people notice?
They have to go on a GIS map and.
Yes, that's a reasonably easy thing for me to do.
Okay.
Like Counselor Pogwitz said, I usually go on GIS and I then do any that are within 250 feet to make sure that I'm getting any that, you know, might be. In case the GIS isn't 100% accurate, I give an extra 50 feet of leeway.
Right, okay.
Better to notice more people than someone, than not notice someone we have to.
That's great. Thank you. On page 17, I'll just mention too, I, I'd love to see, I think our citizens would love to see, it says when you put out the administrative notice of decision in this process, I think it would be great to post it online as well as just mail it out so people can see it and know the work that you're doing, if that's possible.
Do you want that just added to this?
Yeah, I think that could be great to add that because then it just would give, I, I've been hearing from people all along who would just like to know, well, when are things approved? Or what's going on? And it would just be more transparent if we could just, when, when it gets mailed, it just gets posted on the website. If it's not too much of an administrative burden, I think it would be great. So that's why I'm. So you're saying every plat that's approved or every building plan that's approved, it would be. I'm saying when we do this decision, this type two decision.
It's a, it's the decision that we have approved the use. It's not the building plans and stuff like that.
Included in the, in the forthcoming packet for the council and then that would be the public record and.
That could be another way to do it.
I just, I don't know. I don't.
Yeah.
So this would be like a project like Ed's or Dollar General or.
Yeah.
That would allow the community to know that what's going on.
That's a type two decision, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's supposed to say a statement where the city's decision can be obtained. But anyway, I, I'd love to see something like that added in, just so that we can.
I have that and put on the city website. Added after, copy of the decision.
Okay.
Is that reasonable, Joseph?
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I was just, would hope that Joseph would speak up if anything looked tacky to him or weird to him as we go through this. You know what I mean?
And I did go through, I was with the planning commission and all of the readings where they talked about it. So a lot of the things that I have noticed have already been discussed. But if the council brings up anything that I have information on, I will not hesitate to give you my two cents or whatever the two cents were.
Thank you, Joseph.
Okay, any other questions about the type two decision? And I'll just say, you know, this is what like the county is doing. I've been seeing their things. It seems like it's a, it's a, works pretty well. And apparently other local governments do this, right? This is common other places. So it should be a good thing. Okay, if we don't have any other questions through, then that's through 18. Everybody's okay. Then we're moving on to the use zone, starting at page 18. And let's see. I won't say the end date. It's a, it's a longer one. But so anyway, starting with the residential, we'll just go through on the pages. So we don't have to go through each one. Does anybody have anything here in these two residential units? Two R, two, one R, two R?
I would like to bring note to item B, number seven, farming, where building site is one acre or more.
Is this in two R?
No, this is in the one R zone. It's on page 19B7.
Okay.
I would just like to make note of that. Because it does show up again in the R2, I believe. But I don't want to jump forward any further than that, just.
Okay, so let's just look at the, in the two R2s, yeah.
Okay. So I guess if you want me to continue, it is not allowed in the commercial zone 4C. And I just had a question as to why, if there was a one acre or more lot?
We did, that's not something we address. It's, it, the, it's an ordinary print. We just didn't.
Okay. Is, but is.
We didn't really think about it. I think our commercial spaces should be used as commercial, although farming is commercial in a sense. But I don't know, I doubt if the state would have anything to say about that.
There's a zone, there's a zone that's grazing and agricultural. Isn't there a?
That's in the county. So that's.
But.
Okay.
I think it's always been in Port Orford, if you had an acre lot or more, you could do, because we're, we're interchanging because some of it lists farming and livestock production.
Here, we have, Crystal has an answer for us.
Okay, thank you.
Crystal?
We just left it in there because we have had some people, we have people using it. We've had no complaints about farming. At the same time, we took out the private stable, which you will see down under conditional uses. We didn't take it out completely. We put it as a conditional use because in both the one and two, because we have had questions about that and concerns and we feel that it needs a little bit more oversight than just saying that you can have it.
So on the commercial zone, could the farming?
We've never had farming in the commercial zones and we didn't see, we haven't had any, that I know, any questions of people wanting to do it. So we didn't see any reason to change the status quo on that.
Okay.
And.
I mean, you could do that if you wanted to do that.
Well, it's just, I, I don't think it was in the 10MU zone, but it's in the R1 and the R2. And I just didn't understand why it wasn't.
Been in there since the code was made in the early 80s or the late 70s.
So the, just again, for, you know, like context, we know that there's all sorts of strange things in here that are, you know.
Right.
But what they're focusing on is the, the housing changes and the zoning changes that are in the requirement.
If it was something that we had heard problems with, we would have dealt with it more, but we haven't. We actually have a few people using that for different things.
Right. I don't have a problem with it per se. I just, I guess I have a problem that it's in R1 and R2 and not in commercial.
Well, I don't know.
Do you think everything that's in the residential should also be in the commercial? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think a residential zone is, you would think it would be in a commercial zone before it'd be in an R1 zone. That's my personal opinion. But that's, that's kind of where I'm going with it.
So I have a comment that might be a clarification. I don't know if it is or not. And it isn't something we dealt with. One of the issues we did deal with was the manufactured dwelling park, which you will come to soon. So manufactured dwelling park is homes. And we, originally it was, we had manufactured dwelling parks were in 10MU.
Correct.
And the state informed us that you cannot by law put them in a commercial zone because you have to save the space for menu, for, for commercial uses.
Okay.
And if you do, you, you have to set aside space in a residential zone.
So you think that's where they're thinking with the farming, perhaps?
I don't know.
They don't, they don't weigh in on the farming.
Where it makes a difference to, to the state.
Okay.
But it probably makes us, to be honest, it probably makes a difference because that was housing and they're very concerned with housing.
I totally understand. Yes, I agree. Okay. I just found it strange that it would be allowed in a, in a, in a one R zone and not in a commercial zone. It just, do we define farming?
Just moving it from a one, well, we actually, I think have.
I don't know. That's just up for discussion. I'm not suggesting.
We have a farm in a one hour zone.
I mean, that is.
Is it defined in our definitions what farming means?
It says.
I'm trying to find that definition. Maybe we.
Farming. Farming where building site is one acre or more, but not including commercial livestock production. That's what it says in the R1. Now, in the R2, I thought it said, no, it says the same thing. I, it does say the same thing. I don't know.
Possibly, if, just thinking about the codes, since there's no minimum lot size in a commercial zone, that it wouldn't need to be restricted to one acre or more.
And that could be possible.
These are things that we don't know, but those, that's some of the kind of parameters that we think about.
I would just think people, you know, especially if you're, I consider farming like a large garden. If I wanted a one or two acre garden, is that considered farming or is that just considered a guy having a garden? That's.
As long as you don't sell it, that's not commercial.
When I think of farming, I think of like 12 steer on a little tiny lot in the middle of town.
And that, and my term of, it could be wrong, we all have a different interpretation.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah.
I, to answer your question though, we do have things in there that talk about you can keep chickens, not roosters. And sheep, zilch. No, it's only the single ladies in there. But chickens and, you know, it talks about, I think it says ducks and sheep and goats and all that stuff. And the only one you don't have to keep on your property is a cat. Everything else you have to maintain on your property, but cats can do what they please in the city of Port Orford.
Because they're going to.
Because they're gonna, they don't listen.
It's hard to hurt them anyway.
It's hard to hurt them, believe me, I know. Okay, well, so Tim, do you want to do something about that?
I don't know that I do, but I guess I threw it out there and pointed out because I think everybody should kind of think about it. And then when we meet again, we can discuss it. But Joseph does have his hand up, so maybe he has something pertinent.
I don't know if it's pertinent, but I can answer, I believe it was Counselor Webb's question. Definition for farm or farm use means the commercial cultivation of the ground, the rise, the raising or harvesting of crops or other plants, including trees, or the feeding, breeding, or management of animals, including fowl, fish, and bees, or any combination thereof, including uses and structures incidental to the above uses.
So it has nothing to do with chickens, right?
So I think we're, we're covered because it says, but not including commercial livestock production, which your term did include. I heard you mention commercial livestock, I believe.
Commercial cultivation of ground, including raising and harvesting crops and plants, the feeding or breeding or management of animals, including fowl, fish, and bees.
So including not livestock, but not livestock. Fowl, fish, and bees. Including fowl, fish, and bees. Oh, okay. So it says livestock and include, and including.
So livestock does not appear in the definition.
Livestock's not there.
Birds, fish.
No.
Birds, fish, and bees. But here we are excluding livestock.
Which I think is good because.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Do we define livestock?
I even wonder if it should be.
Do we define livestock?
We got goats in town.
Right, define livestock, yeah.
Okay, well, so let's, in, in the spirit of.
Expedition.
Moving along, why don't we put this, we'll put this on a little whatever in the parking lot for farming and stuff and just think about farming in these zones. And this is sort of not part of this general thing. And it may be, you know, we've, we've had conversations through the years that we should just go through and fix some things. And that might be what this is, this conversation.
I think mostly if somebody comes to Joseph and says they want to, they want to do a farm.
Yeah, and I think we have a farm in a one R zone. Like, I would think to myself, oh, do we really want to have farms in a residential zone? But we do have that and so far it's not a problem. It could be a problem if it was commercial livestock or, you know, like.
There's been issues in the past, I think of.
Yeah. So.
Not pertaining to this, what we're trying to do here.
Yeah.
You're right, it's outside the scope of.
I, for clarity, aren't, isn't our purpose to, to go through to what the grant?
Yes.
Was, which was the housing and the, and the changes we made in that? If we kind of stayed on that maybe later.
Stick to the changes, okay. I just thought it might be a good time to address.
The thing is, you're going to be asking for our blessing on every single word of this thing.
Right.
So I understand where Tim's coming from.
Well, but a lot of it's just what's in our code already.
Right.
Already there, so.
I know, but, but again, we'll be asked to.
Well, the purpose was to.
And I, I agree, I agree 100% with what you're saying. At the same time, we're not just working on that section, we're looking at the whole thing.
If this was a, if we were in a planning commission meeting, someone would just say, I move reduce, and it just include farming.
Yeah.
The word farming, and that's.
Yeah.
Under, under a, and you're suggesting a listed use, not a conditional use, that you, that you can just farm.
Well, I just, I would hate to say that a guy has a commercial lot with an acre and he wants to put a big garden in and the city comes and says you cannot put a big garden in because it doesn't say it right here.
So farming is not a garden, oh, but.
Yeah, he said raising crops.
But wasn't it for, it's commercial cultivation.
Oh, well, okay, then we get into that whole definition. I think we just need to do what Sarah suggested and move on.
Okay, on page 21, I have a question, under the commercial zone. It says, page 21.
Okay, thank you.
Commercial zone 4C, use is permitted outright. It says, in accordance with site plan review as applicable. So what does as applicable mean? Can you just explain that? Yes, Crystal?
When you go to site plan review, there's a whole list of things. And I believe it says there in the wording that you choose the ones that are applicable to your site. Otherwise, we would have had to write different code language for every single site plan use that might come before us. And we just don't have the capacity to do that right now with this grant that we had. So when we put as applicable, it means go there and see what fits your use. The idea is not to catch somebody doing something bad, but to make sure that we cover the things that are part of our code.
Right, and we'll be discussing the site plan review section of this in our next meeting.
Okay, and I had one other question regarding commercial and it's not a change. But aren't restaurants in commercial zones? So, but I don't see restaurants in our commercial outright use.
Service establishment.
And I just wondered why that wasn't there, sorry. And, and again, I think Sarah's right if we keep getting off track and I apologize, but.
Retail, it's a retail establishment.
Retail is considered restaurant, then?
Retail and service.
It's a service establishment.
Thank you. That's, it's a question I had on here when I read through it.
Very good question. Because they, they distinguish residential care homes and residential care facilities, you'd think you'd have a restaurant.
Care is different, yeah.
That's, that's state law.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Anything else? Let's see, on these zones.
I'm glad you took out the tire retreading and vulcanizing shop. I don't know what a vulcanizing shop is, but. That's what I'm thinking.
I have mine, do you want to look at it?
Smell of burning rubber.
We weren't sure if we were going out on a limb with that one, but.
No, I think you guys were very safe scratching that one out.
Okay, does anybody have any, are we, anything else? I have another one for the shoreline, shoreline overlay zone. I've wondered, oh, why do we have propagation and harvesting of forest products in that shoreline overlay zone? Because it's like a really specific zone to protect shoreline resources. Yes, Crystal?
I didn't want to touch shoreline overlay zone because we would have to go into the statewide goals and it's not about housing.
Okay.
And I think on several of those zones, I put some comments to try to, I mean, this, the shoreline is a statewide goal thing. And there's a, the shoreline overlay, overlay is 50 feet in from the higher, mean higher high water.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, and so I don't know why they have forest on there, they might have been using it for that.
From in the past, yeah.
Or if somebody had it on their lot, you know, and they wanted to cut down a tree or something. Because there are houses out there already, they might have asked for that.
Mm-hmm. It just sort of sounded commercial, so. Okay. Yep. It sounds like since it's not really relevant to this decision discussion, you know, but if you.
But just a quick answer that might sate your curiosity. When I read that, what I think of is green infrastructure, which is, you know, the term we use to say, how are we going to be defending, you know, our shoreline? It's, well, sometimes the best way thing we can do is plant certain kinds of plants to make it more resilient. And the same token, sometimes we have to take plants away. So it could just be, we have to have it in there for green infrastructure purposes.
Okay. Page 28, I have a question, which is just, we have, I, we have our list of design features, which is for the 10MU zone. And just want to go back and say the 10MU zone was this great project that Crystal worked on. That's when I met you, Crystal, like 20 years ago. And a lot of community came together and did a visioning for the 10MU zone and how do we keep our, our small town character. It's a great report called Looking Forward Port Orford, that the 10MU zone and all these things came out of. Anyway, at the bottom, I see the city's designated design specialist.
Where's this at?
So are we on page 28?
Yes, 28, the very bottom.
Letter O.
O. And so it just sort of made me chuckle because I don't think we have one. So I just wondered about that, should we?
Well, it's your choice.
You mean, we could keep it and then we could designate someone someday? It's an opportunity to designate someone.
Yeah, or it could be the city planning commission or the city council. As, it could be one of those three.
Okay.
If we were to have one of those design specialists, they could specialize in that.
Okay.
And, and I recall a lot of citizen outrage when it came to a tower. Would that be the time to remove tower from the 10MU zone or do you want to leave that?
Where is that?
That's item C under two.
I don't know what a cupola is.
And then.
One on top of our shop.
A tower is something different in my opinion, but I don't know.
It says all, yeah, that's a great idea, Tim.
It would still be subject to our, the building heights.
Okay. Okay.
So it would have you a very short tower.
What is the, is it 30 feet in the 10MU?
35 in the 10MU.
35? I thought we want 30 in the 10MU.
We, some of, we wanted to, some of us wanted to, we did not.
You structure on 17th or 18th in Jackson, right next to where Terry, you built, it was like a tower almost kind of.
By the church.
Yeah.
That house? Yeah, there's a small house.
Oh, on 18th and Jackson?
Is that what we would call it? Yeah, Jackson and 18th, maybe.
That more tourety?
That's, that's kind of like a little.
That a tower?
It's got shingles on it.
Yeah, I think it's actually, I think it's her staircase or library or something, I don't know, it's a room.
A room up there?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be like a lighthouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not, which I wouldn't say anything about it, I just, is that, would that be our tower? Is that what? And if so, I'd hate to see that, I think it's cool.
And we've got a cupola top of my shop.
Right. Are the cupolas on top?
Little cupola.
Okay, I have another question.
Just a little thing that sits in the middle of the roof, it's got windows.
Yeah, okay, okay, I know that, alright.
Okay, I have another question, page 29. I noticed there's.
These design specialists.
Drive-through facilities in the 10MU, but not in the commercial. It looked like we added drive-through facilities. Or was that already there in the 10MU, but it's not in the commercial? I thought that was, I didn't understand that. And maybe that's not relevant to this, so, but it looks like there was, I guess you just, I guess it's not, I guess this is not relevant. It's just you changed the heading name, you didn't change.
I think that was just a Scrivener kind of a thing.
Okay, so we won't discuss that, but it is in the 10MU and not in the commercial, so that was kind of odd. So we won't address that now because it's not relevant. Okay, any other things on the zones? Oh, Crystal, did you have something to say?
Oh, I was just gonna, I, you already said it's not relevant. I was just going to say that we have special design ways that a drive-in goes in, in the 10MU, I believe. And we didn't put that into the commercial.
Okay.
As Ed says, a drive-through.
Right, okay. And so is the other, the Battle Rock Coffee. Okay, so if there's no other zoning questions, let's plow through into the supplementary provisions. Any questions there?
What page is that on?
That's page 32 into 33.
Now, how far were we going to go tonight?
We're going to go through ADUs, which is through, I think, 37.
I thought you said 28, I swear, that was. Is that what you, no, doesn't matter.
We're getting there.
So. 30.
So now we're looking 32, 33.
Manufactured dwellings.
Are you pulling a check on us or something? What's going on over there?
I, I'm going to have to entertain a motion.
Oh, too long.
To extend the meeting.
Good luck.
I have to extend a motion and to, I have to extend, entertain a motion to extend this meeting.
I would make a motion to extend the meeting.
I second it.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Webb?
Webb, no.
Counselor Lovendal?
Yes.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitz?
Everybody's so enthusiastic. Tim, yes.
Thank you. Okay. And if anybody needs a break soon, let me know and we can take a break. But let's try to plow through this. Okay, hearing no concerns about the supplemental provisions, the home occupations.
That's all state mandated anyway, isn't it, most of it?
The one question that came up for me in this one, which is related to the next one, is can, can an ADU, can somebody use an ADU for a home occupation?
It has to be under 400 square feet, right?
Yeah.
According to something written in here.
Yeah.
It would have to be, the ADU would only be 600 feet and it has to be under 400 square feet. So you wouldn't have much living space.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So.
Okay, so any other things on the home occupations? So this new language on home occupations is all related to state law?
Well, they didn't write it, but we felt like we needed to step up our home occupation rules and oversight because they are having us use it for specific things.
Okay. Oh, right, related to the childcare thing, got it.
Yeah, childcare, yeah.
Okay.
So, so we're on 35 ADUs then?
Yeah, so now we're finally, the last section is 35 ADUs.
So, so my question was on ADUs and forgive me for missing it. Does an ADU have to provide parking on the property or can they park on the street? So.
Thing is not mentioned in our code.
Well, it is in one section, and that's what I'm getting to. It's, it's mentioned in the RV park section.
And it's in the STRs about they have to provide.
Right, and yes.
And the STRs.
In this code, they're not.
Okay, but in the RV park section, you have to have one spot for every two sites.
You have to have one spot, you have to have one and a half, you need to have one and a half spots for each site.
That's a commercial, I'll, I'll just break in, if I'm talking too much, tell me not to.
No, you're wonderful, Crystal, thank you.
The RV park is a commercial use. And the city has a right when they have an RV park built to, under the conditional use permit, provide for the parking. Otherwise, the city of Port Orford has never put parking with their housing at all. So we wouldn't have any way to require that for ADUs because we don't know how much parking they have right now.
Okay.
Some of them will have it and some of them probably will park in the street. I mean, that's, that would be assumed.
Okay. It's just, it's. It's just, it's, it's hard to understand because we do require STRs to have onsite parking, but now we're gonna let people build ADUs and not require onsite parking. It just seems like discrimination.
ADUs, they're supposed to be another home, another type of residential. And then even in Portland, they're not, I mean, we don't have to do it. We could do it anyhow we want because we don't have to have ADUs. But like in the big cities, they, they're telling them they can't have parking.
Okay.
I mean, that they can't require parking.
I mean, really, we shouldn't have a problem with it because everybody uses our right of ways for parking anyway. So I, I just thought it was something to bring up.
Well, one of the questions that we have, and I mean, is when we've had this conversation with parking, is there are some places where it actually may be very hard to have parking on the street, like the Hamlet or Deedee Street.
That is true. I forgot about that.
Have Hamlet and there's gonna be possibly more houses going in. And then somebody adds an ADU, you could really end up in a few neighborhoods with those narrow streets having a problem. And so I wonder if there's a way we can say on those, I mean, no ADUs on those narrow streets or something. I guess we can't do that because it's not within a zone. But like if you could say, if the, because if we had the, the width of those streets, which is like, there are a few in our town that are like tiny, tiny streets. And if we could say, add a condition that says, you know, like, if your primary road is less than forty feet wide, you have to provide off-street parking or something.
Just make one side of the street no parking or something? That would be, that would keep that side open and allow for, I mean, the people that, that get everything parked in front of them may not be very happy with that, but I don't know of any other way to. I mean, you could say that they'd have to park in front of that residence, which might help kind of keep them offset a little bit. I don't know. Because of where driveway is, right? If they were gonna park on the street, then they couldn't park in front of the thing. And then across the street from that, it would seem like we don't have a whole lot of driveways there, even on the Hamlet, you know, when I'm looking, I'm thinking about it, they're not like, they're staggered out kind of.
You do have on the Hamlet, most of those homes have driveways.
Yeah.
And that people park in, most, everyone, almost all of them. I can just say that because I live on Hamlet.
There are a couple places that, there's a pinch though, where people who are.
Oh, there's a pinch down towards the end.
Yes, and there are complaints about that.
But no one would want to park in that.
That's because they are renting to some grad students and there's, they each have a car.
Well, what about, I mean, what about that idea that I just raised of like, if you say, if your street is narrower than whatever the street width is, to do an ADU, you have to have off-street parking. And then they would have to put it on their property instead of, I don't know.
So, if I can just.
Yes.
Put this in a context, so this is an outright use.
Okay.
So it would, it's not a conditional use.
Right.
So it would have to be in the code somewhere that if, if you wanted to make, uh, uh, name a street width, that it would apply to everyone. So it wouldn't be something you would specifically require of a, a single person. Because it, the nature of the outright use is that.
It's outright.
You get to do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you for reminding of that.
It seems like as long as it's wide enough for a fire engine to go down, then. I mean, I know it like skinny streets are kind of like a challenge a little bit, but I mean, if you can't navigate a skinny street.
But I don't even know if those are wide enough for a fire engine to go down. I mean, you know, I mean, the, some of those were built like not necessarily by, up to what we would call modern standards, you know?
I think that would, should perhaps be the limiting width would be.
Yeah.
Two car, a car at each side or something and fire, I don't know. That would probably have been my pay raise, period there.
One suggestion to, you may want to have a, an ordinance that says no one may park in a way that restricts, you know, you know, to the, the width of a fire engine.
More than two vehicles.
Some, in some way.
Something we can address at a later date, yes.
Yeah, so if you would like, we, I mean, we could think about that.
That's good for them to take that up.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring that up. Public safety.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because one time on the Hamlet, there was a travel trailer parked with.
Yes.
One tire out in the road, and I mean, it was there for at least a whole summer. And it, it got real tricky down there.
Correct, and there were people who basically couldn't maintain their lane.
Correct.
Because they had to go out and then they were in someone else's lane to go around on a, kind of a blind corner. It was a little bit of a perfect storm.
So I think Ann is correct on that, and maybe even Gear Circle might have some of that area around the backside, too.
Is it a lane if it's not marked? Is it a lane if it's not marked?
Deedee Street's pretty narrow, too, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I'm saying, I mean, I guess we're getting out.
So, I want to ask one other. Can I ask another question, which is, did you guys consider the planning commission making ADUs a conditional use instead of an outright use? Or what was that?
That would involve Luba, I believe. Would it?
We can.
Yeah, Crystal?
We can do our AD, we can do our ADUs any way we want because we're not required to have ADUs. The, the issue with that, though, is that you don't have a lot of ADUs built. I mean, I know that even a few might be a problem on some streets. And without having parking required now on those streets with the homes, we don't have any baseline for when they would have to, what they would have to do. I mean, we were thinking of doing that at the beginning of this, requiring parking. And we thought, how are we gonna require parking when we don't require it now? So, you know, we would have to, they would have to tell us what they're building and what they're already using. I don't know, it just seemed like it got convoluted because they could, they could turn it any way they wanted to. They could say, well, we, we don't park on the street, you know? And some, and the neighbor could say, we only park in the street. I don't know.
Right, okay.
So is there, is there a minimum size for the lot to be for an ADU? Or is it allowed?
Same size as the zone requires. But that's five thousand square feet in the residential zones, but the commercial zone has no limit.
And nor does the ten MU.
Correct.
Right, and I, and at one time, I didn't know if you would want ADUs in the commercial areas for that reason. But at that time, the planning commission thought they should be in all the zones. But there's always options with ADUs. They're not, we're not required to have them.
Joseph has a hand up there.
Yes, Joseph. Thank you, Tim.
This is a question that just rattled loose in my brain, and I apologize if it was already addressed at the planning commission. I, I don't remember. An ADU going into the one R zone, does it still have to comply with population density? Because that was one of the big things with the R1 zone.
Oh, yeah.
Population.
Oh, I didn't.
Five thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, yeah, okay, it was already answered.
R1 and R2 both.
Or five thousand square foot.
Yeah, but the commercial zone, you can go down to two or three if you can get the house on it with the set. And there's no setbacks. And that was one of the reasons that I thought at one time that we might want to exclude ADUs from those, that section, that that just wouldn't be a privilege. When you have a privilege to have as small a lot as you want. But.
Yeah, in some ways.
Could be reconsidered.
Well, or it's, maybe there's no difference. Because I remember when we were talking about heights and things, there, for the two R zone, it's right up against the commercial. So you end up having a fair number of lots where somebody could be in the commercial and somebody could be right next door. So if you have differences in the zones, it's kind of like somebody could, you know, build right next, right? Because there's no setbacks in the commercial lot, so they can be like right on you. So like you could be in the two R zone and somebody could build a, an ADU like literally on your property line. But they could build a house right on your, they could build anything on your property line. So, doesn't really, I guess it's one of those.
But I still think you have that option if that's what the city council wants.
I just think, but there again, it seems like ADUs would be appropriate in a commercial zone. It, it seems like to me they're more appropriate in a commercial zone than they are in an R1.
Well, they're a residential use, though. They're not, they're not a commercial use.
They're, they're attached to, they're, they're an accessory to a dwelling, to an existing dwelling.
Or attached.
Or attached, yeah, they're, they're.
But you can rent it.
It's an accessory use.
Yeah. That's what I mean.
Yeah, so what I would propose that we do just to keep things moving along is why don't we think about this question about ADUs? Do we want to have them in all the zones or not? And to put that on as a question, the planning commission decided to have it in all the zones to, as a benefit to increase housing. But if there's any question about that, we can discuss it at the next meeting, okay? And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is for page thirty-six. Excuse me. Did we, did you guys get, consult with John Isador Public Works about how to do the connections and?
We did not.
Is that just?
We're simply saying if you need more pipe, you have to get it. You can't just hook up on, you can't hook.
Yeah, if you can't, if the flow won't do enough fixtures.
Yeah.
Like a plumbing, it's a plumbing code for three-quarter, one inch, two inch.
The other side of the question, which is, do you have to? That's up to you guys. That's that one. We just said if you need to, you, you have to.
Okay.
And so is that, that a decision, this like, uh, compliance with the building code is something that will happen at the building department?
Yes.
And they will know our, our, are, they will have their own AD, ADU code?
They will know how many fixtures.
Yeah.
Can be used, they use a plumbing code. It's kind of like an electrical code.
Yeah.
But yes, that's the building department that does that.
Now, we have the SDCs, like say, it was just a three-quarter inch line coming into the home and they needed more. So would we allow them, because we're promoting ADUs, like no fees or an adjusted fee on the SDC, an additional ST, um, meter for that property?
I'm gonna put that in the category of, let's put that in the category of how we're gonna deal with water and ADUs. Because that's a category, that's a discussion that has to happen kind of like outside of this code, too. But it's a good question. What do we do with fees? Because you guys decided to basically.
It's not our territory.
It's not your territory.
We, it's, it's you guys, whatever you guys, we didn't want to step into that.
So I'm gonna just make, that's gonna be a separate discussion.
I think that was in that one thing that Greg gave us.
Yeah.
It explained how other cities were dealing with ADUs and promoting.
And a lot of cities are doing that to promote, it's affordable housing.
Housing, yes.
And the situation that we're in is we, our water budget is so topsy-turvy, upside down that we have a, we might not be able to do that, you know? Or we might have to figure out how we're gonna deal with it because, and that's a difference, so let's.
We're in curtailment, so how does that tie into?
Yeah, and that's the thing of like, how are we gonna come out? You know, we, we can adopt this and then just say we're not gonna be able to, we're still not. You can't do it yet or something, but that's a separate conversation.
And that really because of the bathroom, like you can't right now do things to add bathrooms.
But would we, would that also put us in what Lori was explaining? That, I know, but. But I think you guys need to think about what I'm talking about because.
You say what you're talking about without?
So.
Is, are you talking about changing the goalpost or are you talking about?
No, I'm talking about.
Like adding more.
Curtailment.
We can't stay in curtailment forever, that?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and we don't want to.
Because we could be taken to the land use board.
Yeah, but we don't want to stay in curtailment forever, yeah.
We don't want to, but maybe we'd be better to adopt the ADU portion of this at the time when we can actually.
Do it, yeah.
Utilize it.
Yeah. And, and that may be what we decide is to not do this now.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Smart. Yeah, smart, that guy. Yep. Okay, well, if, does anybody else have any other questions about that section or things to say? Uh, so we've gotten through page thirty-six and hearing no other things. I need it. You have it?
So did we make it through what we needed to make?
We made it through what we needed to make. And so I think that what we had been thinking about is that we could approve this section right now.
Given what Tim just said, it seems like we might want to take a little more time with it or something.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I wondered the same thing when we were talking about some other stuff the other day. Was we, we, we're reluctant to allow this thing to occur, but then just like, you.
No, I, I agree, but we know that, we've known that this document is more about like how, it's more like looking forward. How are we going to deal with affordable housing when we have the opportunity to supply water?
And I think we should definitely take it up.
It's a, so anyway, so let us. So we will not take a vote on approving this first section, but we have consensus that we've gone through this.
And we're all pretty good.
And we're all pretty good, except.
Couple of questions.
Couple of those things that we're going to discuss beyond, outside of that. That's just kind of what I want to have.
Discuss those prior to moving forward?
Before adopting this, yeah.
Or we move thirty-seven and forward or?
I was thinking we could go through the whole thing and then we have the outstanding questions of like, or we could do it if you'd rather.
It seems like sometimes what happens is we just lose, we lose them. You know, the, we just lose the.
New regime, man.
Well, maybe, we'll see.
Well, we're, yeah. You know, yeah. I, I can talk a lot about how many times things have been lost.
It's lost, I just poof.
But we are not, we are not dropping balls. We're trying to not drop balls, okay? So. Thank you. Okay. Trying hard to not drop balls. So we are not going to close this public hearing, right? Even though it says that, because we're gonna keep this public hearing open and we are going to continue it to the next meeting, which is gonna be May fifteenth, right? At five-thirty. And so that's not here, but we will, that's what we're doing, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Do I, can I entertain a motion to continue this hearing until, uh, May fifteenth at five-thirty?
You got it.
So moved.
I have a second, okay? Counselor Lovendal?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Yes.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd?
Tim, yes.
Okay, thank you all. That was kind of grueling. So now.
And thank you all.
Thanks, Greg.
Greg, thank you so, so much for saying, I'm so sorry it ended up taking us so long.
You have a good practice.
Greg's like, gosh, I'm rehashing this again.
Yeah, you're.
And Sarah's having nightmare stew.
Thank you, guys.
So many words.
Okay, so now we are going to open up public comments. And we have, I will call up Mr. Russell. Thank you. I'm so sorry that you had to sit through all of that. And we have, yeah, this is for our, uh, public comment period, we have a three-minute public comment period. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors, mayor.
Good evening.
Yeah. The record, Troy Russell, live on Traupon Lane in Vanden. I'm here this evening to request an update on, in memorandum of understanding regarding reusing Orford Streeted wastewater in twenty-eighteen. A resolution put forward by the late Jim Auburn was passed, provided Elk River Property Development, Port Orford Streeted wastewater at no charge. This resolution was never reduced to an agreement, a signed agreement, which is what we continue to ask for. Project is moving forward and we, and will continue to do so with or without effluent water. Reusing wastewater is the right thing to do and we just want a decision. We're gonna move on. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna be covering some of that, I think, later when we talk about. We're going to be covering some of that, I think later when we talk about, uh, our. Some of our updates on grants and such.
Thanks Troy.
Melissa, can I, thank you very much Troy. You, um. We, you, we had given an update, I think in November is when we talked about it, we've given. I don't know if you want to give an update to counsel now about that, or do you want to follow up with Mr. Russell? He's requested this, I mean, after a meeting or something?
I mean, you mean about the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars?
No, he requested an update on the MOU.
Oh, well, basically, until, the main thing that we're doing at this point is, in the grants report, we'll be able to speak about. The seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar allocation, legislative allocation. And what you as a body have voted on was to first have a feasibility study done through Civil West. Our engineers of record. And so that is what we have been working towards. So we have an agreement with Civil West to be looking into what it will take our wastewater treatment plant to be prepared. To provide the effluent to whomever would be able to use the recycled wastewater. And so that is the process we are in at this time is to, um, use that allocation. For that feasibility study and we're in process. So once we know what our wastewater treatment plant. Needs to be able to reconfigure or to upgrade. Equipment or whatever it is that we need to do, then we will be able to say if we can or cannot, um, provide recycled effluent.
So it seemed like that was kind of a more than one question to me.
What he's asked.
Yeah, what Troy just asked. And it was firstly, that counsel agreed to provide that or make available that water at no cost. And that's something at the time that was kind of contentious, you know, there was a little bit, you know, how do we do that? Can, can we figure a cost that would pay for, you know, that? And I think that that, their direction may hinge on that alone, you know? If we are willing to continue to try to, um. Figure out how to do it at no cost because that works well for them. Or are we going to charge a penny a million or whatever we're going to charge? And, and if, if that's less palatable to them than getting water elsewhere, you know, you know what I mean?
And I think the, the great thing about where we're going now that I feel really good about is that we are going to have. Information and be informed. And so we will, we will have some sense of knowledge about what is possible from our side. And what our capacity is, what we, the amount of water we have, all that kind of stuff. And then we can have, um, a meaningful discussion.
So just one little bit of clarification, when it was discussed as, you know, free of charge, that was the lower level of treatment. And that they would be treating it the next level to, to take that expense, you know, and responsibility off the city. So that, I guess that's what, I could have just said that to begin with, but that's what.
I don't remember that part of it, that's interesting.
Yeah, no, that was, it was always.
That was part of it.
It was, we weren't going to treat it at any better level than what we had already been doing.
Correct, they were going to actually do that at their own facility on the golf course at the time. But see, that was before DEQ and all of, you know, they've had a lot of medians since then.
Right.
We're not privy to all that information.
Fire, there was fire, uh, high gradients after, after it was determined that they would do it here and pump out that cleaner water. Through their pipeline, then it included some discussion of fire extinguishers along the route, things like that, that would.
Purple line, I think they continue to call it a purple line.
Melissa, can you also just briefly give a review too of, so the MOU in particular? It's my understanding that our attorney said, no, you, you can't sign that. So can you just give us a little bit of just that update too? Cause I mean, I feel like we're on a good path with the seven-fifty, we're going to do. The feasibility study is the first part of that money that we got the work, that we got the contract for then. We'll, we'll talk more about later, but then we can prepare and do some fixes at our wastewater treatment plant. If it is we're going to work out to do this, we'll, we'll prepare for it. But what about the MOU part? Could you just say something about that for us?
So the MOU component is basically. Wanting to have us say that yes, we will provide this effluent to you. So that you can recycle it and, and use it. But we can't make that, we, we can't enter into that agreement until we truly know what the ins and outs of that agreement are. And so when I first started with this, I was, I talked to our lawyer and I said. You know, we, we need to come up and make this document better of what, or you know, something that we can, that we can. Come forth with that, that will make this work. Because what I've heard from Mr. Russell is this is just boilerplate, we can add things to it, however we need to do it to make it work. This is just, but we just need it signed so that they can get their DEQ permits. Well, when I talked to the lawyer about that, she said, Melissa, it's, that's not how this works. Usually the entity comes to you and they make the proposal. And then the council decides yes or no on that proposal. So.
And what changes we might want.
And what changes we might want, but they come with the rules of engagement or what they're willing to do or what they. They have it more lined out as to what they are proposing for this deal or for this agreement.
They had all of that worked out a long time ago.
Well, but they keep bringing the same thing that then.
It is that same thing that, that, that is pretty nebulous about, you know, how much effluent they would, they would like. And that they will be able to say, no, we don't want that effluent sometimes if they want to, but then they will accept it when they want to. Which is kind of that sticking point, at least it has been with a previous council of, well, then is it a spigot or is it a secondary outfall? Because that's truly what we, what we're looking for to help the city, to help the people of Port Orford is to have that redundancy. So to have a secondary outfall in case things go south, which, you know, things could do that. It's nice to have, it's imperative to have those redundancies when you can have them. And so I think some of those questions about what does this truly look like? And what is the agreement and what are we agreeing to? Is the piece that our lawyer has said, you can sign that document or not, there's nothing legally about it that you couldn't. But it doesn't seem like your counsel has enough, enough information about what they are actually proposing to step into an agreement about it.
They already have that document. They got that document many years ago, the one Brett just spoke of. They basically, we agreed to give them the effluent for free. And now we're at a standstill. We need to work out the conditions of that and that's what Shayla always told us. You're going to have to work out the conditions, exactly what you're speaking of, but we're at a standstill, so how do we? Where do we go from here?
I think it's waiting for, I think it's using the, the.
Getting the feasibility.
Seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to, to make sure to see, is this even feasible?
Correct.
Do we have the ability to provide?
Tell them that?
We have said that.
Oh, so our attorney's written them a letter explaining?
I don't think that our, our lawyers sent a letter to that thing. I believe it's, it's we, they have been communicated with because their lawyer, Bill Close, has been talking with our, with our lawyer. And I think it's mostly waiting for them to say, what do they need? What do they want? What, what specific things are they looking for? And we could then say, well, according to our feasibility study, we can provide A, B, and C.
Correct.
So this is, so we're trying to kind of on our side to say, what can we even agree to? Because right now we don't know what we can agree to. So we're doing our due diligence with the, with the wonderful pass-through money. To, to come up with, how do we, because recycling the effluent is a great idea. And it's a, it's environmentally sound and, I mean, it's, it's a big push and it's what people are talking about. It's a great use. But it has to be feasible for our community to provide that. And it needs to be feasible for our wastewater treatment plant to do it. And so what Civil West is saying, Marlin and his team is saying, here's what is feasible. And here are the things, because I'm going to tell you, there's going to be things we're going to have to do to that place in order to get it to a level that they will be able to use. And then here are the things you need to do to make this work. And then we need to come up with, okay. Pouring into our infrastructure to some extent. To be able to provide that.
Well, maybe we, maybe we can't treat it to their level. Maybe that's one of our, when they come to us and say, well, we need it, well, we can get it to you, but we can't get it to you at the level you need it. Put it, put it back on their hands and make them treat it out at their facility. I don't know if that's even.
Well, but this is the thing, we're going to become informed. And that's why instead of having it coming to us and that being like, well, what is this?
Well, as long as they're updated, I think it's fair.
Well, and this is the question I have for you is, I think it would be good to, I don't know what's happening with your lawyer, but Mr. Russell has been coming the past couple of times. I think it'd be great if you don't mind just to give him a call and just explain it.
Talk to the lawyer or me talk to Mr. Russell?
Sure. Because he, he came at the last meeting and then he left and then after he left, we talked about it. Remember Crystal had many things to say about, why isn't the lawyer doing this, that, and the other, um, from them? And then we've talked about this project and we, we have it in the public record that we, that we moved on. That we made the decision about that money and that we're progressing. I mean, we have it all, but I don't know that.
They have it all.
That you, that there's been a conversation. And I know you've told me, you've talked to him in the past, but he might need to be reminded of where we're at or something.
The other piece that I think was a, a key point to this is as we were doing this and as we turned in the information for the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. All along, what we have heard is legal fees and city staff time will be covered. That's how we're going to pay for those things is for the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to do that. Well, when we went to turn that PIF form in, the project information form, when we did the budgeting for that and put.
Legal.
Legal and city staff time on it, it was rejected. Because in the original agreement, in the original thing, it did not have, that was not listed on it of legal fees and city staff fees. And so we had to call the Business Oregon people and try to figure out, how do we do this? Cause they said, she said, I, we can't sign that, it doesn't match up with the original intent of the document.
Too much.
You're right. So we then. I then asked and pushed back a little bit to say, we've already spent money, particularly with legal on this. And so it would be nice if we could get in at least some legal fees. Out of the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. But she, and I said, and you know, we've spent a lot of staff time doing a lot of these things. And she said, staff time is a no-go. So all staff time that has been put to this, we are not being reimbursed for and we will not be able to use any of it to pay for our staff time. It's only legal and only the feasibility or the infrastructure piece, period. And it's limited, and it's highly limited legal.
There was a time when. Elk River Property Development. Agreed to pay for that stuff. Correct. And I would ask, I would bill them.
But then we, so then, if you recall, we actually, I think it was last summer, asked. The attorney to draft an agreement to that and she said that would be not really ethical because then she would be.
Working for them.
Working for them.
That was before this whole thing came along and it was, it was basically that, you know, they had said, well, just send us the bills for your lawyer. And even before we had a lawyer, it was, well, we've worked with Shayla, just work with Shayla and then have Shayla send us the bill. And then that became.
I can see how that would be unethical, however, you could bill them.
Yes, we could bill them, have the attorney bill us and then we bill them and then the attorney.
Basically what we're doing now. Now that I do, I did kind of winnie and wine to get legal into there, so at least we can be reimbursed for what we've already sunk into this.
I agree.
Or we just stop. To me.
But that's.
We can't keep going if we don't have any money to do the things that are our priorities. We can't be dumping staff time that we don't have even, regardless if we get paid or not.
However, the only place we can spend that money is for the wastewater treatment plant. So it's not as if we can spend that on, on other priorities, say if you, if you had other priorities or things. We, we have to spend it, it is allocated.
But they've got their money. So like you're saying, we need to bill them. But I still say, do we have the staff time even if it's paid for? You know, I've mentioned it before, how much staff time is this going to take? It's already taken more than we have.
Well, and that's a good question and that's, I think, part of what the feasibility study can help us do. Cause I think one of the big eye-openers last, at last summer's hearing. Was when we learned that the permit was going to be under our permit. And so our staff had to like be.
So we could be required because we will be, we'll be liable for that effluent as it travels all the way out. And so we have to be able to test it and to, and to do that. I mean, the infrastructure will be theirs, but the effluent is still under our, is still under our DEQ permit. And so we might have to go test it out there or do other things. So it might be that we have to have them pay for staff time to be able to do the extra testing. But we, we aren't even at that point yet. Again, we're still trying to figure out, is this feasible?
Correct.
For us to even do in our little donut plant over there.
But I will say, you know, the effluent, being prepared for effluent, I don't care who the user is, it could be anybody, right? Is the right thing to do. I mean, to have a secondary outfall, a true secondary outfall is a big deal. And if anybody doesn't believe that, they should look at our books and see that we're paying for two outfalls. One that failed and one that's new. And if one failed, two can fail, in my opinion.
That's what I'm saying, I think it's a good idea.
There are benefits.
Absolutely, absolutely there are.
If it's an outfall and if we can do it, if we can pull it off.
Do it, I get it.
And so that's the whole thing. I mean, as opposed to just kind of, as has happened many times in this room, talking about it in circles and, you know, not being able to. We're going to get information. We're going to have actual knowledge that can inform us in figuring out what to do and then.
This would be a good piece of.
That will help us.
Which they, which that pass-through of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is doing for us. Cause we are not paying for that feasibility study, we are not paying for the engineering, we are not paying for anything like that. That is what that money is being used for so that we can get some good information to make an educated decision about it, so.
And, well, okay, we'll save the rest of that for when we get to the, to the other piece of it. Okay. So that was the end of public comments. Is there anybody that wants to make a public comment online? No.
I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand or comment.
Okay, so we will move forward then. And, um. I propose that we kind of really quickly go through. Uh, we, the next, that gives us, brings us up to the administration report. Um, Melissa, do you want to just give us a real, or we could, do people have a chance to read through it already?
Absolutely.
Just ask if anybody has any questions from Melissa, we can ask.
I would highlight that two of the citizens out, um, in internet land. Um, that we do need more citizen representatives on our budget committee. And so please bring, uh, any applications by, we, we have to have citizen input for that. So we are opening those for applications. And I do have two, um, that maybe we would update a little bit later, but we did get good news. Well, in the last two days, the dredging grant from Business Oregon that we had put in for. That's buttoned up and done and contracts are done and so we can continue moving forward on that one, so huzzah. And also I am hitting the button to, um, get the contract to, um, work on the Hamlet survey that our, um. Historical Preservation Society, Rick Cook, has been working on, um, for a, the bid winner of, um. George Kramer of Kramer and Company from Ashland, so we're working on.
Also working on the contract for the community building is still.
Absolutely.
Getting done.
But we have a meeting scheduled for the pre-construction on that, so.
Yep, that's good. Okay. Any other questions on the, we have a public works report, I think in here. And I think the thing, I just wanted to highlight in that, do we have that Joseph in here? Or is it? Sorry. Oh, yeah.
Eight-six.
The thing to highlight here, I just wanted to, because I had a conversation with John about this. Is that we had significant days in March where the reservoir was really down at these low levels. And, um. I mean, not the reservoir, the, the treated water tank, I'm sorry. It, it says reservoir, he meant Coast Guard Hill, that's why I saw reservoir as, when he wrote it that way. It's the tank, that big. And, uh, so that's just the situation where, um, you know, we had all those storms, the water got turbid, they couldn't run the plant. And so the treated water storage got very low. And so it's just, it's just help, we just have to be aware that our water system is very vulnerable, which is why it's so important. That we work on fixes and why I'm so happy about the dredging permit, but we have to keep working on other fixes too. Okay. Any other?
Citizen use, I think that's another thing that we've seen a lot of increased use as well.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so to keep, keep low flow showerheads and low flow toilets and make sure you jiggle the handle so the toilets don't run, please.
Okay.
It's low.
Any other, from liaisons, people got to read? Is there anything that's a highlight that anybody just needs to mention?
I didn't.
Oh, okay. Well, we had, we, the planning department, I put, put in the report and I didn't give it to Joseph. We approved, we wanted to get the council's approval for La Dean Ricky to join our, become a commission, on the Parks Commission.
Okay. So that will have to.
Parks or planning, you said, you started with planning.
I meant parks.
Parks, okay. She's still getting over her.
Getting over the trauma.
Planning Commission.
Yeah, that's most unfortunate because. Need to go ahead.
Uh huh. So we, I guess we'll have to do that. Can she just attend the next meeting, but she can't?
Yeah, I mean, she's, yeah, I'll see, I'll have her attend. She won't be able to.
Participate.
She can be a quasi, yeah.
Okay. Well, let's get that onto the agenda next time. Okay.
But there was a vacancy on the Parks Commission, is that what? And, and.
We have two vacancies.
Two vacancies and we advertise and we have one.
Recruiting. Yep. And we need to really, two of the commissioners are going to leave in September. And so that'll be quite a, a loss. So we're actively trying to recruit folks.
Thank you, Sarah.
For the emergency commission as well. I think we've got one maybe.
One vacancy?
We've got two vacancies and I think we may have one person interested.
Okay. So does it make sense to put up?
So who?
And we.
You generally appoint and then we confirm.
Well, what happens is the commissions make a recommendation to council and then it comes to us. And it's usually in the consent calendar. That's how it works. I think we probably, it would be a good thing for us to make sure we like know people. It would be great, I mean, I've been thinking like, oh, the person never shows up and we just do it. It would be great if the person actually goes to the commission meeting, you know, so that you know who it is or that they have some interest, you know?
Yeah, La Dean did come and speak and.
Yeah.
I think we should expect that.
Yeah, I think that's great. Okay, let's keep it moving. So I had put in here, I, I had put here, in here, I thought it was going to be under old business, but it's under the mayor's report. And since I put it into the press release in the newspaper, even though it's late, I want to go through it, which is, I put in a grants update for us for, for April 25. And just because I think, you know, we've got some important updates and I just want to run through it. So this is the whole list of them. And I'll just go through very quickly that, did any, did people get a chance to read this? Cause then maybe I won't go through it and I'll just go through and mention where we're at with things quickly. The big thing, the big news is we had two grants that are now, one that got canceled. And that is the federal brick grant, the FEMA brick grant at the bottom of the first page. That was our $6.7 million grant that we had gotten very close to getting because we made the cut and we were one of only three projects in Oregon that made it in our category. And we were expecting a final decision in July, so that was canceled.
That's a done deal, it's.
Well, I'm going to tell you what I've been, I've been working on it. So on Tuesday, I went down to the Senator Merkley Town Hall with Congresswoman Hoyle. And because I'm the mayor, I get to go in and have a little meeting with them, with other elected officials. And so I asked for their help. They sent, they've already sent a letter asking the administration to consider reversing the decision. They, and you know, some of the, some of the communities are in the, I should say, the Democratic contention, part of the delegation sent a letter. But one of the communities that lost its funding is Grants Pass, significant amount of funding. So Val Hoyle was going to reach out and talk to Representative Vance and see if they could work on it in a bipartisan way. So let's hope for that. Representative Hoyle gave me the option to try to put in for a little piece of this through an earmark. Cause the Congress is still doing, has their earmark programs. And every district member gets like 15 projects. So over the weekend, I worked on taking a piece of that and making it into a, basically like a $1 million grant. So for like one pipe and got that in, because it was like a four day turnaround. And I went and I got the, our county commissioners, I asked them for a letter of support. And I asked Senator Smith for a letter of support and then got, we'll be getting those. So that's something trying to do to keep us moving. Also, which is not on this list, earlier this year, we put in a similar kind of a request to the legislature for that kind of funding, another million dollars for a different pipeline. So I'm just telling you this to say, we're really trying because this is so important. We have to do both our reservoir and our water line fixes. And so that's the big news. We also have another one of these grants that's delayed, which is the water, raw water tank. That's, it's still in progress, but the, there's a delay in a certain part because they're taking down a part of the website and redoing it. So we're hung up. Community, as Melissa said, the community building, we're plowing along on that. And so we're hopefully going to sign the contract maybe this week and get it going. We got the dredging permit. The other really, we explained to you about the 750 for water recycling that we were just talking about. What's really cool is the feasibility study, phase one is going to start first. But what's also, I'm really excited about with this money that Senator Smith got for us, is that we're also going to include some key projects that we need to do to get ready for water recycling, such as fixing our UV filter. So we're going to make ourselves prepared to do it if it's feasible. And we, we just can't, there's just no way we could reliably supply water of a certain quality at this point without that. So what I'm glad for is we're going to use this money in a way that's going to benefit the city and make it possible if it's feasible. So I think it's a, it's a really good path. The other thing I wanted to highlight, yeah, we put in for road funds through the allotment grant. Melissa mentioned the historic preservation grants moving along. And then the other one I'm really excited about, on the next page, you'll see this drinking water protection grant. Our city got ranked number one. And next week, we should find out, I think we are going to get $415,000. And that's a grant that's going to pay back the money that we had to take out to buy that piece of land in our watershed. So that's gonna.
Making payments on that.
We have not been making payments, we haven't had to yet. But we will have to start making the $400,000 payments when there's a little stewardship component of that grant. When that's done, we were going to have to start paying it. So now we're not going to have to pay any of it. We're going to use this money and pay it off. So it's going to be like, we did that. So that's something I'm really excited about. And yeah, and we, so there's the other ones, we're put in for the visitor center. That's super exciting and anyway. So I put in the different things on this brick grant that was canceled. So you could read it. I gotta say, it was a huge, felt like a huge punch gut because, gut punched because we really worked hard on that for years. Some of you guys will remember, we worked on it with the previous administrator. I think she pretty much devoted the entire effort of the city to that grant for like two months. And so anyway, and we're still getting over it. Okay. So if anybody, I just wanted to go over that to just say, we have a lot of balls in the air. We're working towards getting money from outside sources to help us accomplish some of the things that we really need to accomplish. And I feel like really good about that. And I know it's a lot of work on staff. And I'm doing a lot of work of it too, so it's good. Hopefully we'll turn a dial. Okay. Now we are on to old business, number 10. And we are going to, with this item, I would entertain a motion that we actually, continue this to the next hearing.
I would make a motion to continue ordinance 2025 dash zero one to the May 15th meeting at, by 30. Thank you.
Second then.
Okay. And the discussion is, you will recall that we, we wanted to have this code in here. That, oh yeah, so we're just going to do that. We don't have, okay, so that's that. And now we are going to move. Yeah, thank you, Melissa. This is what happens when we get too late.
Tired.
I will call for the vote. Counselor Lovendal.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Kim, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item number 11, Finance Committee Tier One Projects. So we had the workshop, we went through all of the whole thing. And in this packet, these are the ones that were the high priority ones that we feel like the staff could do work on now to move the dial now. And so what we need to do is, at this point, I would entertain a motion to direct staff to follow the, to move forward with the high priority budget committee, finance committee recommendations.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Kim, yes.
Counselor Lovendal.
Yes.
Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. New biz, new item is 11B. And this is just an informational point, which is we have our new counselor, Counselor Brennan, is of course a spouse of one of our employees. And it came up that we just wanted to be very transparent about that and make it clear that there could be times when there is a conflict of interest. And we wanted to just be transparent with the rest of council and with the community about that. So we reached out to the Oregon Governmental Ethics Commission and asked them for guidance about how to handle that. And they sent us a letter. And we boiled it down here to the key points in that letter. If anybody would like to see the whole letter, I'd be happy to share it. But this is what it says. And we just wanted to bring that and share it with everyone. Counselor Brennan, would you like to say anything further at this point?
No.
Okay.
Where is, is that old business?
It's in 11B.
Page 13.
13.
I don't, I didn't, I thought we all knew all that, but that's good.
Well, it's just a, you might have, but I just want to make sure we all know it. So then, you know, just to not, so everybody knows and we can.
Be clear.
Be clear.
Just quick thinking.
Be clear to the community. Okay. Then moving along. Any questions? Any? Number C is this ordinance revising the short-term rentals. If you recall, this is the one where once we make the AD, if we choose to move forward with the ADUs, the, the Planning Commission recommends that we do a parallel ordinance in our licensing, like in our STR code, to make sure we don't have the, them used as STRs. And so I would entertain a motion to continue, we're putting it in here now so that people know it's coming. But I would entertain a motion to continue this one to May 15.
Will this be added into the new code?
It's not, it's not land use. So if you recall, the other one is a land use and it's part of a land use hearing.
Right.
We're going to do this separately. So yes, this would get added to the STR code, which is kind of under business licenses. So that's why it's two separate things, but they're going parallel. If we choose to adopt the ADU ordinance, we could adopt this at the same time. We choose to not, we could keep them together and do it. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to continue this to May 15.
Shall move.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'll call for the vote, Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Lovendal.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Kim, yes.
Counselor, um, Webb.
Webb, yes.
Okay. Okay. We're getting there. Okay. So that now leaves us open for citizen considerations. Do we have anybody? Dave, would you like to make a comment? Anybody online? Nope.
I, I have a comment on this STR ordinance.
Okay.
It says the businesses on the attached list are allowed to operate. We don't have that list. At least I didn't get the list in my packet.
Okay, where are you?
On 11C, page 39.
11C.
See it further resolved, the businesses on the, on the attached list are allowed to operate under the STR ordinance.
Okay.
But we don't have that list.
Okay. So we will, do you see that Joseph?
Okay, very good.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't quite understand that. Oh.
I think it's 27 businesses that we.
Yeah.
Allowed to operate.
Got it. Okay.
And they are one and they are two.
Yep. Okay. So any?
One thing on the, the conflict of interest.
Yes.
The class exception, which would cover most of what would, would be coming for us, is that to be obtained prior? Like with that class exception, should we pursue it now? Or, I mean, otherwise you're not going to, it says that it can only be determined on a case by case query to.
Yes.
Ethics mission. So shall we ask now for that determination?
No.
That way.
I think the letter that goes into it a little bit more, said it had to be more like on a case by case basis. So you'd have to ask the query when the, when the time came up, when the circumstance came up.
Case by case rather than, I, okay.
So we were, I was sort of thinking this was the, we were asking, what we did was we asked, this is the circumstance. You know, what are the things that we should be careful about? And so that's kind of what we were asking. And then they said, for this class exception, you have to come and ask.
So at the port, and I know this isn't the port, but I'm saying at the port, I vote on matters that are, could be considered a conflict, but because it's a class of individuals, then that offers that exemption and it's just automatic. I mean, we don't even, so that's new to me to read that, that bit. And I wonder why, I wonder why that's so different.
Give you the full letter if you're interested.
Yeah, I mean, for my own knowledge, I mean, you know, maybe we're making a mistake over there and, and we didn't even know it. But.
Yeah.
We, we were advised by special districts to, that's, that's just been, we've asked. Were guidance on that. And that was the guidance was as, as long as you are in a class. Now if it was. So there are some other things, I won't, I won't take your time on. Anyway, yeah, I'd like to inform myself a little better on that if you don't mind saying that. I'd like to read it. And it's not for any, I mean, I completely trust your judgment as far as what it can, conflict or potential conflict is. But I guess it's from my own understanding that I may have been making mistakes.
Well, you know, like I didn't understand about this class exception before I got that letter and read it. So it was helpful to me to become more educated about it.
Well, I understand the class exception, I just was never, we never had to, to, to ask someone to determine that for us. It was just, you're a part of a class.
Yeah.
Which. Just, you know, she's, she is.
There could be some, there could be some cases where it's a class exception and some that are nuances.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I was interested in.
So anyway. And there could be times when, yeah, so anyway. But I, the reason I wanted to put it out here is so that you guys all, the rest of us all know, because basically it is on Counselor Brennan to declare a conflict of interest. But if anybody feels like she should declare a conflict of interest and she's not, then it's on us to say, I think, to say.
The letter stated that another counselor could not, only she can do it.
Okay. Right.
Or is it? That's what the letter said.
Yeah, okay.
So I have to go get up from this chair and walk over there and say, I mean, that's silly. No, I, I don't think, I don't think we're going to have any trouble with it.
She can seek advice from our attorney as well.
Right.
Because it's, like Brett says, it's not that easy to determine that she can seek advice from the attorney at the meeting.
You know, on our agenda at the port, the second item on the agenda is, is, um, it gives opportunity for any declarations of conflict of interest to be made. And that, whether or not, I mean, that just even speaks more to it, that we're like actually really honed in on that because there's, you know, two or three fishermen on a board.
Yeah.
And everything that's done is almost, you know.
An exception.
Yeah. So I just wonder what, what those, those differences are. I just would like if you would send that over to me for my own.
Yep.
Dedication notice.
Okay. Any other, do any other, uh, staff members have considerations they want to make?
I think the only thing, just as a reminder, that we need to, um, sign off. If you haven't signed off on the Rogue Federal Credit Union signature cards, we need that so that you folks can sign on the checks if we need you to, things like that. So.
We have to go there to do that?
Nope. I got it right here, man. I think there's, you have to sign about six times. So just.
You said three and I kept signing and signing and signing and signing.
Hold yeah.
More.
Okay. And then I will just say, as a, uh, if there's no other counselor considerations, I'll just say, thank you guys so much for hanging in there tonight because we had that executive session so long. It's really taken a very long time and, uh, I appreciate your attention and care. And, um, we are going to be looking ahead in the next week to doing, or a couple of weeks to doing another finance committee meeting and keeping, and starting to work on moving towards budget stuff. So, um, onward we press and thank you guys all so much for your service and for, and for all your help and input. Thank you.
And I would say too, on that with, with Mayor Ann, that Mayor Ann has been putting a ton of time into all these grants and in this transition and has been working very, very, very hard. And, um, we appreciate you. So thank you.
Very much. Thank you very much.
To say the same. Thank you, Ann. And thank all of you for being patient with me during Cindy's medical issues. So we're getting those sorted out. So thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful, Tim. We're so glad to hear that.
Yes, we are.
I appreciate your, all your support.
I'll take it if you don't have it. You can take it. Actually, let's see. So I have, I have this here.
Okay. With that, I will, okay, why is everybody still here? So sorry. Okay, you guys, I was really going to try to get these meetings done shorter, but oh well, now I know. I'm going to, I'm going to give it, I don't want to like traumatize, uh, my, the staff here. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:45.
Thank you.